I wouldn't be surprised if when we have grandchildren, which I never will.
That could be.
All right, it is seven o'clock. We are going to get started. It's actually 7:01. I'm getting the evil eye from a couple of people. We'll call them into order. We have two presentations next week, Asian Pacific American Heritage Month and Memorial Day. If there's no comments on those, we will move right along into our -- we have several public hearings. The first one is an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2019 adopted budget. Sounds like we just passed a budget. Now we'll go back to amend the old budget, but that's what we do around here. Last -- all right, next week's a public hearing, the action on this proposed budget, and it will be a roll call, though, trying to give you a heads up. So I'll call on Jenny Trippley.
Just a reminder, because Jenny's coming up, this is something we used to do, like in the January, February timeframe, but we, and Jenny's going to get into greater detail, we wanted to wait until the tax receipts had come in. Don't count your chickens before they hatch. Once they hatch, then we'll come back and then we can look more for the eyes to what she's going to talk about tonight.
Yeah, so the poll is one of our larger, as you know, tax revenues, and it's one of the most volatile. And it, as we thought about it, it seemed to make more sense to wait, as Bill said, until we saw what happened. And that ended up being a really good decision this year because the surprise we got, we weren't expecting. So it kind of proved its point in the first year. You don't want to, you know, count your chickens before they hatch. But also, as you get further along in the fiscal year, you can really see where you need capacity versus where you could transfer things around. As you recall, or you may recall, last year, we changed some policies internally to allow budget transfers within departments to be, basically, a director can do that up to $100,000 versus it was $5,000, I think, before Bill had to sign off, and $30,000 before we had to bring it to you. And that really didn't give folks an opportunity to kind of move as they needed to. Only the town manager can approve salary vacancy savings to be moved to something else. And then, of course, anything that's very significant, we have to bring to you. And so with that latitude, we could see where we had capacity in other accounts before coming back to the table and asking you all to appropriate more funds. So we're trying to be way more conservative as much as possible and to live within our means. That being said, there's always going to be items that you don't plan for. Budgets aren't static. Or off-cycle grants, that's a good portion of what we're asking for appropriations here today. And then insurance recoveries. We kind of had a heck of a year when it came to people hitting our traffic boxes, destroying traffic lights or poles and the gym floor, which was brand new, was utterly destroyed by a faulty sprinkler head about, what, a month later, was it? So
That was a great day.
Yes. So we're putting that money back into the expenditure accounts, but it's offset by the insurance recoveries. So if you go through the staff report and the dollar amounts, really, in the general fund, the only ask of pulling from fund balance, so something that's not supported by new revenues this year, is a $252,500 ask. $200,000 of 210,000 of that was the final transfer over to the information systems fund for the final portion of the police radio replacement project. That was funded at a total of $840,000. During the FY19 budget process, we had said that was how we were going to handle that. So that's what we did. And then the balance of items that we're asking to be funded through fund balance is really the excess landfill costs and recycling costs, which isn't a surprise because we had to go and ask for a recycling fee increase. So those costs are increasing, and we need a little extra money to cover that. So that's the general fund side. Water and sewer fund, again, that's funded purely by user fees and availability fees. And one of these appropriations, we're asking for an additional $292,000 because Fairfax County is going to fund a portion of the Sugar Land Run relining. So we had to appropriate the expenditure and show where the revenue source is coming from. We had a couple of overages, again, with our water, purchase of water and also the sewer treatment. Sewer treatment, again, as everybody knows, we've had an epic wet season last year. There was additional INI, that's influence infiltration into the system. We pay for all of the water that passes through the system. That's why the relining projects are as important as they are. So that resulted in a higher bill. Fairfax Water, we're ending up having to pay them about $110,000 more. Their fiscal year is actually a calendar year. So we see kind of their adjustments after they close their year in January, and so we had to roll with that. We had a couple of sewer lateral repairs that exceeded what was just in the expenditure budget. There's plenty of money in that restricted fund because, as you know, we charge, what is it, 25 cents a quarter, $2, sorry, a quarter to fund, it's $2 a year, actually, sorry, to fund this sewer lateral repair account. And sometimes, we budget about $30,000 every year for those expenses, and sometimes it exceeds that. So this isn't money that we have to find from somewhere. It's already sitting in a restricted fund. Last, finance, the finance portion of the water and sewer fund, we did implement units, as many of you know, and there were a couple additional conversion and training fees associated with that. So that's coming from net position, which is, net position is an enterprise funds version of unaside fund balance. In the cemetery, cemetery's doing great. They just needed a little more money in their memorial sales expense account because their memorial sales revenues are higher. And last but not least, again, in the capital improvements fund, that $118,000 appropriation is for the expense for replacing the gym floor, and it's fully covered by insurance recoveries.
So with that, I will take any questions? Okay, question, pardon me, questions for Jenny?
So most of this is enterprise, which covers itself? Is that right?
The general fund portion in total of this is about $383,000. And then the rest is capital projects funds are governmental type funds. They're funded by the general fund. But the very large ones, the $635,000, that is water and sewer fund. That is the enterprise fund. So, yeah.
Thanks. Any other questions for Jenny? Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is a resolution to consider adoption of town managers recommended 2021 through '25 portion of the capital improvement program.
Yes, as Dana was walking up to the podium, I'd actually give it to you. Let me just give you a few, just top, just a few focus points for this discussion. I asked to pay very close attention to the water and sewer over the next three years. That is critical for the metro area. Also, our transportation road projects, as they're coming up, the Spring Street, the Amber Street, those are very critical. When we start getting into the out-years, things like the nature center, Phase Five, things like that are not in focus yet. We are undergoing a pretty significant
Jenny.
Analysis with our financial advisor to look at how we can afford to fund those things. Is it bonding? Is it going to be out of general fund, fund balance? How are we going to approach these questions in the out-years? That is something that we're going to take a stronger look at, and that's going, that's ongoing right now. As a matter of fact, the CIP next year will take a little bit different event, and look a little bit different. This last year, we had this format. Next year, we're going to roll out a new format with the help of our financial advisors and take it from more of a financial perspective. But I really urge you all to focus on these next few years, especially as it comes to warrants or especially as it comes to transportation, because those work directly towards what we're trying to do in metro and also downtown. Anyway, Dana, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, we have FY25 CIP. And as usual, it's a six-year schedule, and it's really just a planning document, except for, of course, your first year would be not just part of your budget. And then we're beginning here with what we call the out-year amounts, which is a plan, how we're going to fund and support these projects through design and construction. Briefing our annual process a little bit for you, just a little bit of pressure. Again, how do we develop, we select concepts and we amend them based on, of course, we look at the adopted CIP, we look at recently identified needs, the changing conditions that come to our attention, we get input from citizens. Then we move into guidance from the planning commission, which is the town manager, and finally, it's here for you, for the town council. Overall, our process really starts in October. We, in terms of at the staff level, with projects proposed, reviewed, we have a team of senior staff, and then projects are due around the first of December. We get into some meetings to kind of refine the program. We recommend it formally to the planning commission. It's always been at the third week of January, where the process is tipped back just a little with the planning commission's new schedule. So this year, we were at the planning commission in February. And so at that level, it's still not fully constrained. We take into account the constraints we know about and the funding sources that we have, but there's still a number of factors that are at work. So we have planning commission public hearing, we get planning business recommendations, and that goes to the town manager, and that's per the Virginia Code. Most things, of course, go from commission to the council. But the CIP is different. It goes to the town manager, and then that allows the town manager to develop the operating budget and typically have to constrain the CIP on various points. Try to fund everything that planning commission recommends, but typically, there are some adjustments to get the thing in shape and lined up with the budget. So, of course, you, the council, consider a one-year operating budget in April, and when you do that, you're essentially authorizing the first year of the CIP. And then what you have for you now, of course, is the full six-year CIP, is that roadmap that helps us in our work as we plan, although none of these out-year things are budgetary expenditures or firm financial commitments, subject to the future, what your future decisions are and what future council's going to decide. So we've got 47 projects this year, about like last year, 35 general fund, 12 within those enterprise funds. Most of them are ongoing. We do have a couple of new projects. We have the police exterior garage to accommodate various needs that they have for that facility out there to secure certain items and certain functions. And then we also have a new project, this traffic signal element, Herndon Center, you might be familiar with this, project coming in there. So we have 12 for proper, really supporting that improvement. Oh, if we look at some of our functionary, functional areas, we have park recreation to look at. This is just one way to break it out, but typically, we highlight some of these things. Brady Park tennis courts, that's really tracking as it was in the previous CIP renovation of the courts and the air structure. It's about 20 years old. Community Center, Phase Five, we have design FY23, construction FY24 as in the previous CIP. We have Rennett Park Nature Center. We set here for FY22 funding for a code review of the previous concept. It was an extensive concept. It was worked out back, and I believe it was, oh, six, design in FY23, construction in FY25. And that's another general obligation bond funded type of project. We need development. We have nine general government projects. And of course, most of these are implemented by public works, but CD does sponsor some of these. We have five street improvement projects. We use our multi-modal approach. Of course, we have East Ellen Street, you're familiar with, major beat-up project, probably running up in the $45 million range. We have three pedestrian bicycle improvement projects that are related, including the trails to that Herndon Metro rail. It's very important. And we have wayfinding signs and historic markers, is another one. There are 13 projects under public works. I'm not going to cover all those, but a lot of them relate to streets and intersections, traffic signals. We have this 200-inch project program we've had for many years. We have downtown utility relocation and stream restoration, which is relatively new projects supported by Fairfax County. Kind of think of the name of the fund, but it'll come up later. Showwater Tax?
Thank you.
Information Technology Hall is important. FY19 includes something that plays a next-generation planning, information software. We're supporting that with reserves. So we really need capital funding in FY20. We have police radio equipment, that was mentioned by Jenny in the reserves. We're covering part of that because what you'll see on the CIP sheet is just 630,000 in reserves, but the actual will be 840 would be, assuming you take that action that she is recommending, executionally. Again, a new project for the police exterior garage funding is in FY21. It's at $700,000. It's for secure storage, so things like police bicycle, emergency radiness equipment, first weather equipment, special emergency types of things. And there are others, some police property that really needs to be protected. I know Gulf Force, we have some studies to complete in FY23. We have construction of clubhouse expansion possibly in FY24. Probably looking, as we move into the future, the ability of Gulf Force fund to support that. The structure was built in 1980, so renovating and expanding it is what we're talking about. And then under master plan improvements, these are enhancements to the Gulf Force master plan, which goes back a ways. But those are construction elements recommended by that plan. Okay, water and sewer, always important. We're really dealing with infrastructure investments for the long term, with the town's comprehensive plan and the various elements of that water and sewer infrastructure, especially capacity purchases. That's about 85% in total. Need capacity to be able to support what's in the plan. And then we have some support from Fairfax County for the sewer main, we've got an annual rehabilitation. And we have almost $10 million, $9 million, whoops, $12,000 supported by, supported by Water and Sewer Fund. Operating revenues and availability fees, so more of a pay-as-you-go mode on that as opposed to bond funded items. Total for a six-year period is $46 million, $51,000. That's down a little bit from last year, but I'll mention why. So for just FY20, for general governance, $2,639,000. Of course, we show all funding sources for every project in detail, you know, all these, at least a dozen sources for all these pieces of the puzzle sort of come together, as it were, to fund these things. And we don't have out-year projects that are just TBD and, you know, open to grant or whatever. We're pretty, you know, 100% uncovering everything. We have grant funding to support almost $26 million for general government projects. It's about 56% of the total. We've got, got the general fund recurring revenues supporting over $7 million. So that's, that's over 15% of the total. And then below this, if you were to draw a line across here, we're talking general obligation bonds. So at this point, we're looking at financing capital items. So we're looking at six, six projects, total over the six-year period is $11.7 million, although that does include over $3.3 million in the estimated reserve column. So that's just under 25% of the dollar total for general government projects. So, you know, rough terms, 70% plus sort of in the pay-as-you-go mode, and then under 25% in the finance mode. This is our general fund bond capacity breakout, right by the finance director, total capacity you can compare. It's based on 12% of general fund expenditures. You can see what's outstanding in the fiscal year, and then your total available. So it's A minus B equals C. And so this shows you sort of the direction and the extent to which we're taking advantage of that capacity. The breakout of those funding sources, back to water and sewer, operating revenues and double O E P's, $9.9 million, water and sewer fund bonds, which would be, I understand they would be either revenue bonds or so-called double barrel bonds. And that would be $42,250,000. Fairfax County portion, as I mentioned, 1.1 million. Total for water and sewer is $53,305,000 from all sources. This paragraph kind of gives you the visual comparison. We're not doing capital leases this year, but I did leave it on there to show you that it's a choice of different approaches this year not to do vehicles and other things that we might have done with capital leases. That's another form of debt that we won't have. And so that, that's a picture, it's, you know, significant in the overall, plus we're not paying any short-term lending type interest rates. And we're going more of a pay-as-you-go basis for things like vehicles, large vehicles and so forth. You can see the general obligation bond. Of course, our grant, grant's total of almost $26 million is the biggest single means of financing general government projects. And then general fund recurring revenues there at the bottom. So that, that just kind of puts that in that type of perspective. Similar type of graph, just big picture, you know, looking at downtown parking fund versus water and sewer fund versus Gulf Force, which is general fund, you know, all projects, all costs. How do they compare? And again, I'd mentioned the water and sewer sources. So that's a comparison, again, debt versus operating revenue, Fairfax County portion. Yet another way to look, look at the comparisons is just kind of list them all out. So that's what I did here, general fund, grants, offers. We've got almost two in the six-year period, and so forth and so on. I'll read all those, as I mentioned, there's numbers. CIP doesn't align with the comprehensive plan. We have major projects, especially the ones that require debt and so forth. They are in the adopted comprehensive plan. We have other major infrastructure CIP projects like water and sewer that support the redevelopment of comprehensive planning. And in fact, we had a number of recommendations, for instance, within the metro rail station area plan related to water and sewer elements. So we have significant transportation projects that are included in the comprehensive plan. They're also in regional plans and programs and supported by county, regional, state pedal grants. We work hard to ensure that they're in the regional plans to the extent we can get them in there, and it helps us whenever we seek the funding. As we start to wrap it up here, looking back, compare the town managers' recommended CIP before you to the planning commission recommendation. Again, the operating budget was created in those weeks after the planning commission, it made your recommendations. So we did have several projects requiring some adjustments, mostly projects that were supported by, only by general fund. So we had a number of those where we moved it from, had to move out from FY20 to FY21. I listed those all out in the staff report. I'm not going to reel through each one. But the other significant factor I'd mentioned is that we had three, three recurring maintenance type of projects that we have removed from the CIP, just going to be included in the operating budget. These are the types of things that, you know, years ago, we had debates at the planning commission level, you know, whether or not to include these types of things. I think as the town is growing, it probably makes a lot of sense to keep these as more as maintenance. We're talking buildings, major maintenance, obviously, maintenance, right? But GSA vehicles, they're really not long-life capital facilities. You're not going to be generally working with decades on that. And major road repaving as well. So those are the three recurring maintenance projects. We're not working to have those in the CIP. That wraps it up. Any other?
So what you're saying here, several themes we discussed in the budget as well, some things on the CIP and operations that need to be in operations. They hit to the, on the beat hole, where we were targeting that to capital, $1 million or so it hit. We had to recover something some other way. You're also seeing some of the, just to put a finer point with Dana was saying, where once you get out of the couple-year timeframe, it gets to be more of a, it's, it's not constrained yet, as he was, I think that's the term he used, which means we don't have a sense. We're projecting what revenues are, we're projecting what the fiscal, what our expenditure patterns are going to be as a government, and we're trying to fit it in. That's why I think we need to bring a financial analyst in to give us a plan, a financial plan to wrap around this, so we can say, yes, we're doing X project in 2024, and here's how we're going to pay for it, assuming these seven functions. So that's going to be the next step we're going to do with this going into next year. But I think, I think Dana pretty much hit, hit the point. Just one other thing is the driver on the big water and sewer number is the sewer capacity purchase. We have to buy a million gallons a day from some source, Fairfax Water or Loudon Water. And it's looking more like it's Loudon Water. And that is an expensive proposition, and if we buy it from either place, we're going to have oversized pipes or create a way to transition the sewage to them. So if it's Loudon Water, we've got to create a whole new way to get to them, and that's all encapsulated in those numbers you're seeing. Again, one of the other things that I just want to put a finer point on as well, we know we're going to debt finance a lot of these things. Availability fees can pay to service that debt. So as we go in and somebody pulls a five-inch main for a very large building for Metro, they're paying a big, big ticket chunk of money to us that's going to service that debt. So that's how we pay this off. It's not going to be user fees. It's going to be the development. Now, the issue up there is the risk, the risk. They don't pay the availability fees to the building permits. So if, let's say, we, that we need to be planning and getting in front of them so they can pull their building permits. So there's a certain amount of risk that we're going to go add to lay the ground, buy the capacity, lay, put the pipe in place, put the home stations in place. And if we have a market pause, we still have to pay the debt service. So again, that comes back to where our financial analysis come in. We look at the net position of the fund. We know how much we can go, how many, how many days, weeks, or months we can go at risk on these things. And that's part of the equation, too. Before we get to that point, we'll be pretty deep all much more in depth on those things. We're still We're still a good year out from the capacity purchase, which is the big one. And we are right now trying to get our hands wrapped around pipe and getting it to Loudon or Fairfax. We talked to Loudon, now we're going back to talk to Fairfax. And there might be some good news there too. So we're not, well, in terms of what we can do for Fairfax if we end up going to Loudon. So there's a lot of things in play on that. That's kind of the driver behind those big numbers is the availability, million gallons a day, plus the pipe to get it there, pump stations to get it there. And then depending on what occurs in growth, if the growth is much more advanced by another million gallons at some point out ten, twelve years from now to that growth as well. But anyway, that's why water and sewer is important. It is critical and it's where our biggest risk lies. It's something we've got to keep our eye on that ball. It is significant.
Questions for staff on C I P?
Jen.
Okay, Jen and Sheila.
Comment, not a question.
Okay.
I just want to say, thanks for putting in attachment three on all the grant funding. So that we can show that to the public that you guys are really out there working hard helping to save money on this.
Other people's money?
Absolutely.
You're clushing things out as it were?
Jen.
So number thirty, the eight hundred and forty thousand dollars for.
I know this.
Yeah. And then it says that Fairfax County is funding the central console? So, sorry, how much of that are we paying for? Are we paying for the eight forty?
No.
Is this for the console fund? Is it already done?
It's the console, the console's done. We'll be buying the radios and.
I will have a report on that in about two weeks about when we need to, but likely this year.
And what we have been doing is we've been squirreling away money a little bit each year. And as Fairfax was delaying implementing this, we were still squirreling away the money and prepared for it. So we weren't sitting on our waters waiting for them, we were getting in front of it. So we were able to, on the budget adjustment, that's the last installment to fully fund that effort. And soon as Maggie Producers report in two weeks, and we get a good data from the county, we have the money in the bank, we can go forward with implementing it.
Is this something that gets changed a lot? I feel like we've had several radio things over the past several years.
We actually have, and we've had the console. We knew this was coming down the road.
Maybe it's the same one we keep.
Same one.
Same one, there was an urgency initially, then the county delayed it, as is typical with giant projects like this, because it provides them so many different jurisdictions. But we're prepared to at least pay for it. We don't have a choice when they make the switch, we have to be on the same radio.
Right. Okay. Right. Jen. And then number thirty-one, the H P D garage for seven hundred K. So I just want to know the timing on that. That's, sorry, there's a lot of like sheets to look at, so I'm trying to remember where that goes. But so what's the, what year is that for?
That is an F I twenty.
It's like twenty-one. It emerged this year. We initially had it in the draft for this year. And then when we looked at the money and how it broke out, we picked it a year. Because it's still, it's just, and it wasn't, and talking to the chief, she could live a little bit longer without it. So she thankfully didn't jump up down my desk when I suggested moving it.
Okay. It sounds like a lot of money, but I just, but, okay.
We were surprised at that too. It was much more costly than we thought. We had a study done to look at that and look at the cost.
And then the two big-ticket items on Parks and Rec, which we usually talk about during the C I P discussion, which is the community center phase five, which we pushed, I know that's fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four for four point two two five. So I guess my question on that is, I still feel a little hesitant on that item. I think especially as we talk about the community center and the percentage, it's a super useful resource to the community, the community center. It's just whether we continue to invest further in it, since it seems like it's, whether it's fully optimized and whether we need that. Certainly love that we're investing in the tennis courts and the tennis bubble. So I guess my question is, you know, that it's in there for twenty-three and twenty-four, if we want to push that a little further, especially given all this water and sewer discussion, like does next year, do we just say, you know what, let's make it twenty-four, twenty-five? Like, do we just continue to push that if budget is constrained? Like, that one concerns me a little, it's a big ticket item.
I would caution that decision this year, and let's pause and get our financial analyst to finish their work. And if it looks like it's going to constrain us too much, then we have that conversation perhaps next year. Because we're still a few years ahead, we're still a couple.
That's what I mean, it doesn't start till twenty-three, twenty-four.
That's why I was kind of saying at the outset is, you know, pay attention to water and sewer, that's a funded, we know where that money is coming from, we know where we're going to be spending it. We're now down to, we're off the thirty thousand foot view on those questions, we're down to about fifteen thousand foot on that. This is still at the thirty thousand foot level. And we are, like I said, undergoing an analysis to how are we paying for these things and as we move it forward, especially given how transportation projects have changed.
Yes.
How transportation funding has changed, and we have critical transportation projects that we have to get done, which that's got to be part of that conversation too, because that's all buying for that same money, but potentially on. So give us, give us a little bit of time on that to straighten, to give you all better advice. And I don't think we're in a position right now.
Some more time, but next week, if we approve this, it's.
No, no, we're talking, we just started about like a few weeks back. We finally got to, once we came off the budget, we started gennning up this conversation. This is something I wanted to do a year ago, we got overcome by other events.
Okay. So is your question, like, if we pass this as it's written, do we still have flexibility next year to move things around?
Which we always do with these, because it's further out. Right, so this, and because the same question for running the other big ticket item, which that's fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, not for construction until twenty-five, but to start some, yeah, that's penciled in for the three million then.
And I would even suggest the twenty-two, the F I twenty-two expenditures, just to do a code review on the concept we have and take a look at that. I mean, that's not a very large ticket item, something we can go forward and we can certainly look at, you know, once we get the design and construction, we're ramping it up. But we can talk about that again, once we get a better understanding of Davenport as to how we still have to pay for all of this.
Okay.
Again, I want to get into the business of, if we say we're going to do something in twenty twenty-three, we're doing something in twenty twenty-three. We have a plan, we're executing it in short, we have anything really dramatic changing, we're going fast in twenty twenty-three on that. I don't like to shift things around, I like to have a good solid plan. And we need a financial plan that makes sense to go with this plan. It's a great planning document, the planners do a great job, D P W does a great job on it, they do some great estimates. The work is solid, it's just how do we pay for it was, the projections were always done in-house, and I don't think they were done with that, that were as finely tuned as they probably should be. Operations impact, O N M impact of these projects, we have not done a great job on that in years past. And I'll tell you this from when I was sitting in page-a-seat, you know, yeah, we kind of threw a number against the waters. Just to fill out a cell on a spreadsheet, it wasn't the local analysis that goes into that. But I think it's important to understand the cost of ownership of these things is crippled. And I think these are all questions we're asking Davenport to answer.
Okay.
Or help us answer.
I think it's growing pains. We're doing this in a lot of areas where we used to be a lot smaller place, dealing with lots smaller issues. And now we have a Metro station and our legal fees are going up because we have complicated things that we're dealing with. And it's kind of tripling into everything, so. And it is Davenport that is doing our analysis, and they do this all over the country, right? Or at least all over.
Well, they have, they have just about everybody in every jurisdiction in Virginia, except for maybe just a handful of four, five, six. I mean, it's amazing where I see that and where people pop up.
I have a lot of confidence in them, especially after our bond rating issues.
Yeah, and how they handled that and just effortlessly they handled it from our perspective, but they did a phenomenal job.
Other questions or comments on this?
So I want to thank the staff, but I also want to ask, what exactly do that do from us on this at this point? Just.
Is the general, again, is, are the projects in our place, I think Jen asked a very pivotal question. Does this make sense? That's another bit, in fact, that we would ask for. I would suggest that, it's a great question, and we can have that conversation, but I think we should be giving you more data to inform the decision. Again, part of the thing is, I really want to understand what our resourcing is financially and capacity for, for all these projects.
So this is kind of just an initial.
Yeah, so we need to have this adopted because it's like, by law, we have to have an adopted C I P. Dana, if I answer that, if I went, if I went, do we need an adopted C I P?
First fiscal year, I do believe.
So, so in the meantime, we'll be sorting through this, and when we come back next year, we're going to have a financial analysis. We'll be briefing water and sewer.
Cesar.
Cesar. Forty, the water and sewer, forty-two million, maybe I wrote this down, fifty-three is planned.
We'll borrow that money too, because again, it's going to come in a thirty million dollar capacity purchase, roughly. It's a few million dollars here and there, just looking at, maybe to see if she'll give me a higher low. I feel like I'm a card shark or something. It's around.
I get that money's cheap. I'm good with that.
And we have triple A bond rating, and we're getting really good interest rates and.
Well, there's a risk with that, I mean, in turn, right? So I think that's the discussion I'd like to have as well. As we look at these things, yes, it's easy and cheap to borrow, but at some point we have to decide, is this a priority? As opposed to kicking it down, hopefully we get an offset in actual services, Metro goes online, these other things happen, right? So that's a conversation I'd like to have. The grant fund, if I'm right, I wrote this down, twenty-six mil, is that right?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Tell me again how that's secured, and is there any risk of that not being twenty-six mil?
Well, it's about a dozen different grant sources, we work hard to get all these. They, we generally don't put anything in here unless it's pretty darn committed from the granting agency. I'm trying to think if there's anything at all in here.
That's fine.
So to pinpoint some of the risks that could occur. So the risk of, there are time insurances on these things, we have to execute grant by state certain of such, and if we don't, then we lose the money. The other risk is the one we talked about on Spring Street. So when we get into land acquisition phase, they go, whoa, 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 we had some scope changes, and we have now, real estate's more expensive, it's two point five million more expensive than we thought it was going to be. That's where the risk, those are the elements of risk in the.
But if it's in here, it's pretty good, right?
Yeah, and we have something from the agency saying.
It's a world most likely.
Yes, we're stroking this check.
Good. The three projects that we removed from the C I P, including the actual budget. So help me understand the difference, our definition of what maintenance and operational, help me understand how we can just move that and make stuff happen.
Well, the way we looked at this before is if it was over, like, vehicles over fifty thousand dollars are being replaced a few, which is an operational expense, it's replacing a vehicle that's used for an operational element. If it's over fifty thousand dollars, it went into the C I P. And so you would have a series of vehicles in the operating budget under fifty thousand dollars, and a series of vehicles in the C I P for over thousand dollars. To me, that made that sense in terms of, if you're taking the operational costs and applying it towards capital. So what we did this year is bring them all under into the general fund operating budget. And that's what we did this year, we pulled them out. Same thing with major road repaving, we have a repaving budget, actually, if we want to get into a repaving budget, a concrete budget and a major road repaving budget, the C I P. We then get grants from the state that come into the general fund, they get passed to the C I P, they get passed to the general fund. It was, it was just a mess. So we have a paving plan, and why are we delineating between the two? Let's lump them into a paving project and execute paving plan against the paving project, put it in a place where we get the reimbursement that's coming in, that's the general fund operating budget. So we kind of brought those in and dropped them in there. Same thing with major building maintenance, we were putting, you know, the H back in this building is due to be replaced. All right, so that would be in the C I P. The door over there needs to be replaced, that's in the general fund. And we decided, let's pull, that's cost of doing business. I can't operate that business within any season, so it doesn't work. So let's, or if it goes out unplanned, we'll pull that out of the general fund to get it done. So we brought that project out of the C I P and operationalized it in the operating budget. This was part of the instructions you all have given me during the budget guidance that you all provided to the town, to the staff, and we executed that. And that's what, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
I just wanted to make sure we were still aligned on the definition of what belonged to the C I P.
And this was all part, this was the first year where it was called out of the C I P and moved completely.
Again, just long-term risk, you know, the projection, the expenditure, that, that is high risk at this point. How we fund those things, how we prioritize those, we definitely have to have that discussion. And just so I'm clear, we haven't touched the beat hole in like twenty-some years, right, the rate itself.
That's correct. And it's the rates.
Yeah. So twenty years there.
And also too, if I can just, we are still a little bit more expensive on most of our schedule in Fairfax County. That's another thing that might go in, because we compete for businesses. Now granted, our square footage is less than, there's some rust in it, and there's a lot of things going to a business relocating or staying here in town, but it's something to consider as we're considering.
Okay, other questions or comments? Big document. Okay, thank you Dana. What is next? Number five, it's a resolution to approve a temporary license agreement to use a designated public space in the alley adjacent to Jimmy's Old Town Tavern for outdoor seating for an event, and this is town attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Most of you have seen these types of requests for a license agreement before. Jimmy's Old Town Tavern, the proprietor of the business located at the corner of Spring and Elden Street. And the owner of the property, Vicky Welham, on behalf of Curtis Hernan Properties, applied for a temporary use permit to expand their retail sales to the outdoors for one day. Everybody's aware of the annual event that's held there on Memorial Day weekend. They have requested for, at least since I've been here, but maybe a few years before that, so less, several or many years, to use the alley that is town right-of-way between or behind Jimmy's restaurant. So they are asking that the council approve the temporary license agreement with grants permission to use the alley located there in for outdoor seating on May twenty-sixth. They have, and Dave Stromberg is here to address any issues of, I'm looking for you to come up, any issues you might have about the actual temporary license agreement, which controls what actually occurs, noise, sales, location of the seating, et cetera. The license agreement controls their use of our property and requires the insurance. Do you want to answer any questions, and Dave's here to answer any questions about the actual use?
Any questions on this issue? Sydney. So I saw that, because there are a lot of these that are done administratively, and the fact that the town owns the property is why it comes before the town council.
Probably exactly. If it's purely on private property, then it's just administrative approval.
It's just a use permit, I mean, it's just a temporary use permit. If it involves town property, it's a license agreement, just like it was a license agreement for Junction Square. Encroachment stoops.
So this is an encroachment?
It is, they're using it, it's similar to that, they're, it's a use of our property.
They're encroaching us.
Is there, is there any way this could become administrative? I mean, I assume that having the insurance and all the, the reason I asked this is just, I mean, it doesn't really need to come before us.
The code of Virginia requires that any lease, or any sale, transfer, lease, any use of.
This counts as a.
Of, yeah, town, not town, but property of a locality, be determined by their local governing body.
Isn't, this is one of those things too, that I think for a long time had just been happening, and then we realized, wait a minute, we should, this is town land, we should, we're not in concurrence with the code, so we started several years ago going through this, because it put us at risk, because this was happening on our land, but we didn't have any agreement. Another one of those growing pains, things that just sort of happened over time, and so this is probably the fourth or fifth year or so.
Every year I've been, here's my four years.
And this is something that...
Insurance is very important.
Yeah, that's probably the main...
Do we not require insurance when we do temporary permits for private property?
No.
Well, if it's on private property, the town isn't at risk because we're not party to it.
The party is may, they probably should, but that's not our jurisdiction.
All right, well, thank you.
And is this the thing that, that can only happen four times a year? I don't remember the exact code section, did you say that?
Three times a year, each event can be four days per event.
Okay, gotcha. Other questions? And next up is an ordinance to grant a second franchise amendment for a root expansion and increase in allowance of conduit. At next week's public hearing, the council will follow the bid process, which we've done several times, and this will also require a roll call vote. All bids received will be entered into the record, and currently, we have, shocking, unreceived just one bid. I'll turn it over to Tammy Justine, who is our deputy director of Public Works.
Good evening. This is a second franchise amendment for Zayo. This is essentially the Exhibit A, showing their overall network within the town, and then this specific request for an extension. So, I zoomed in on it for a little bit. Obviously, we only care about this part that goes into our property, but they are coming to Fairfax County. And the route, this route will extend them to five conduit. The green will be eight conduit. Currently, they're only authorized four. And then, there's a section on private property, and it comes back around to our property again. So, that is essentially their amendment to...
And Tammy, the, for those that, like me, that didn't know what the difference between five conduit to eight conduit conduit means, it's taking up more room in our right-of-way.
Yes, exactly. Lots of stuff under there, too.
Does this require any digging?
It will. Some, there may be, this one may require a little bit of concrete, sidewalk removal and replacement, but they'll obviously try to minimize the, any, anything out there. A lot of it is directional bore, so you'll have a beginning hole and an ending hole.
Any questions or comments?
So, along those lines, so five means five conduits under, and literally just means five pieces, and then eight is eight.
They can have no more than two.
There's not much room.
No, and each conduit is two inches, two-inch diameter. So, you can get rather large when you start thinking of how much to think of in there.
Other questions or comments? I sure hope that pulling this cable is easier than pulling cable through a hundred-and-twenty-five-year-old house, because that will test the air, I've heard. Okay, thank you very much for being here. We also have, the next item is ordinance to approve a natural gas line easement to Columbia Gas for an underground main service line located on town-owned property.
Correct, and the reason why it's coming to me first is simply to let you know that this was expedited in order to allow Columbia Gas to get the line to the elementary school to get the service started in order for people to come back to school for next, for next year. And we've been working with Columbia Gas as well as the Fairfax County School System.
Bet you that's the kids what they thought about.
Turn it over to John Irish, who has all the engineering details.
All right, great, thank you.
So, if you've read the description, the location is to Clearview Elementary School, and the town property is off of Cul-de-Sac and Young Avenue. There's town property that's adjacent to Five Ligon Park, and the stream up through there that this has to cross. And so, this easement is a twenty-foot-wide easement, basically from Young Avenue down to where it meets Fairfax County Park Authority land. This is relatively standard as far as what they're asking for. It's, again, most likely, we haven't seen any construction details, but what they've portrayed to us, most of this will be boring as well. Once they have either your agreement that this is okay on the easement level, they'd still be held to all the standards of doing any, if it requires a site plan because of the amount of disturbance, it would be required to do that. If they can inform us that it's not going to require a site plan, they still would be required to support any right-of-way agreements where they're actually crossing in our right-of-way at termination on Young Avenue, et cetera. And yes, they'd be required to support their project with performance bonds and insurance as we would require of anybody else. So, it is relatively straightforward, but because it's on-town property, you need the town council to agree.
Any questions or comments? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, John.
Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, that brings us to our general items, and there are three, I believe. First one is a resolution to authorize the removal of delinquent and uncollectible charges from the town's accounting records. It's Jenny Trickle once again.
So, this one's easy, and actually, it does beg the question, which I just, I'm gonna sort this out first, that I've asked Lisi Yates about, and I'm looking into. I'm coming to you to basically ask for your action to write off a whole twenty-eight-hundred dollars in uncollectible accounts. So, this is more of our way of getting to say rah-rah, because last year, we, the write-off ask was thirty-five thousand? But that was also partially just a cleanup of things that should have been written off beforehand. So, technically, we can't keep uncollectible amounts on our books, and so, this will, this just gets the accounting records clear with your approval. However, if there is a way to collect these items, that set off, anything like that, or somebody magically shows up one day and says, hey, I have this parking ticket, I'm gonna pay you, we'll, of course, take it and thank you very kindly, and, you know, process the receipt. So, I'm proud of the fact that it's much lower than it was last year, and moving to a third-party parking ticket vendor was definitely a huge part of that. Last year's parking ticket write-off was almost fourteen thousand dollars. It was about a hundred-and-fifty-six tickets. Complus, in addition to providing the cool equipment, takes care of collections, and, and they are more aggressive. So, that's really, that's really great. So, that's what this item is all about, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them. Questions, Mary?
Sheila. So, I noticed these are only from fifteen, and I think a couple from fourteen. But when you had the big one, how many years did that go back?
That, that spanned a couple of years. For example, there was one that spanned twenty-eleven to twenty-fourteen or twenty-ten. That was the B-Pole, and some of the bounce checks. There were a couple that spanned twenty-thirteen, sixteen, and seventeen, but this is purely limited to, you know, just the fifteen and one item from fourteen.
How long do you normally keep those?
I'm gonna say the years. Three, three is our statute of limitations for collections.
This is from fourteen?
Fifteen, right. So, we kept them on the books for close to five, but really, we run out of our ability to put some teeth into it.
Public shaming your address out there doesn't...
Actually, I was just looking at the town green... Fairfax City publishes their delinquent taxpayer list on their website and in the newspaper.
Wow.
Oh, yeah. Well, that'll make you pay your tax. But can we really, can we really do that? Because I know we've had some meals tax issues that we weren't able to publicly discuss. Is that really legal?
Well...
We just researched that today.
We just researched that. Technically, there is an exemption in the secrecy of information section of the Administrative Code of Virginia, Title twenty-three. Title twenty.
Secrecy of information?
Yes. It is, and it's, it's actually, it's the commissioners and the revenue and the treasurers, the elected ones in particular, are very, very tight with their information. At the city, for example, we weren't even allowed, we'd only access to just the cash receipts portion of their software. We wouldn't have seen any of that information, because they said absolutely not. It's actually a class-two misdemeanor, I believe, to blab things, so... The, the things that are, that people include on a B-Pole returns, for example, confidential, you know, and, and it's super need-to-know.
So, B-Pole, no, but private residence, yes?
Well, because you're not, yeah, I get, yes, you, yes. But now, B-Pole, let me back up. The tax itself is different. It's not, right? But the confidential information, like their gross receipts and their exemptions and anything that's on their tax returns, that's all secret. But it is, and it is important, because not every company is public, obviously, and, and so, we do have to keep that very guarded.
And just to delineate to one further, the meals taxes, that's even different than the rest, because the meals tax is paid by the business, so it remits it, it's paid by the customers to the business, and they hold it on our behalf and then remit it. So, it, it, that's a little bit handled. And that's, and that's another question.
There's still that receipts component to it, but we're not that, that punitive yet, although, maybe we should put some...
I guess I would ask that if the council is interested in doing something to specifically request what, regarding what tax and which one.
What we think of that?
I don't think what I think.
But the real estate tax, doesn't matter if it's business or individual?
Correct, that's all, and that's all available on Fairfax County's website. Whether or not you paid your tax?
Yeah, how much the...
How much, what you're...
And whether or not you're delinquent.
You can see that.
And how much you are delinquent.
The assessment is known, and then the rate is known, so anyone can...
You can always become a, in your business, so that you don't have to have that stuff on you?
Well, and it, it's, it's for businesses, too. Anybody, for real estate, it's all there.
Real estate tax is different than your, your B-Pole.
Right.
That's not...
Because the assessment is externally computed by the assessor versus your receipts is reporting based on your business.
Does anyone have a question about the write-offs that we're looking at here? My only question is, is just a curiosity. On Attachment Four, there were a couple of B-Pole things that were writing off, like two dollars and forty-five cents, four dollars and twenty cents. How does something like that happen? Is it just something that's like an error in remitting the bill, and we just can't chase it down?
Probably interest.
Okay.
A couple, the check came in maybe a few days after, and it just wasn't worth...
So, these people are like, we're done here.
All right, cool. Any other questions or comments on the write-offs?
Okay, good job, Jenny. Thank you very much. Next up is a resolution to authorize a standard project administration agreement between the town and VDOT for redesign and reconstruction of the intersection of Monroe and Eldon Streets. And John Irish, you're back.
I'm back. This actually can, I'll give you a little bit of a background education, and also ties into what Bill was talking about, grants and deadlines, et cetera. Revenue-sharing projects through VDOT are a local administered funding source that is matched by the locality, and they have what they call programmatic agreement that we signed back in two thousand thirteen. That covers multiple projects, and you can move the projects in and out. That programmatic agreement had a one-three-year, it had a three-year timeframe with one-three-year extension. So, as of June thirtieth of this year, that programmatic agreement no longer is effective and cannot be extended. The project at Eldon and Monroe was under this programmatic agreement, and now has to be turned into what they call a standard project agreement. So, now, it becomes a standalone project under the same revenue-sharing funding grant, but it just has to have a different title, and it has to be administered by VDOT separately. So, this is simply moving it from one type of agreement to another. And that is pretty much all this is doing. And the reason it comes to you is because of the switch of program, program agreement, and it also allows the mayor to sign off on those agreements.
Questions or comments? Bill?
Does it change grant funding or anything? Okay, let's just make sure. Did I like to make that note?
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. And finally, there is an ordinance to repeal Hernan Town Code Section forty-two point one, or dash one-five-four, parking for certain purposes prohibited, and the town attorney will enlighten us further on this. We did get some information previously, and this is...
As you know, we've been doing some examination of our parking ordinances. I had the opportunity to review this particular ordinance that has been on the books for many years. It's also in some other jurisdictions. That used to happen a lot, where across the state, you'd all enact the same thing. Other jurisdictions have repealed it for several different reasons, and I can find one reason that this particular ordinance and its language needs to stay on the books. Otherwise obsolete, people advertise cars on, you know, their website now, not by putting signs in their cars, and also, again, by putting a sign in their cars that involves other, involves the zoning ordinance, too. So, a couple of different reasons why this is unnecessary any longer, and I would recommend that we have to repeal this particular ordinance, communications with the police department, and the parking enforcement, and everything like that.
Questions or comments?
So, you didn't mention, I thought I read that the State of Virginia doesn't allow us to, is that right? The State of Virginia doesn't allow us to enforce it anyway?
No.
It doesn't?
No.
It does?
I would say that in terms of general parking regulations, we're enabled to regulate parking on our streets. Whether or not it's a good idea for the town to enforce that, and whether or not, in my legal opinion, it's something that is enforceable, is, is what I've addressed here, and my conclusion that it's, it has no value to parking enforcement.
Is this looking at signs based on their content? Haven't we had a lot of stink with that?
Part, part of that is, is my concern, and the, and the fact that it's no longer necessary. We've, I've had conversations with our parking enforcement, individual and the chief as well.
My chief and my lawyer think it's a good idea, but I'm inclined to agree. Madam Vice Mayor?
So, if no one has any objections, could we move eight, nine, and ten to the consult agenda?
That works for me. That would be the write-offs, the authorization for the redesign, and this parking ordinance. Yes, okay. All right, so eight, nine, and ten will go to consent. Thank you, ma'am. Speaking of consent, there are already two items on there, which are just proclamations that the, the requesters did not request recognition. So, if there's no discussion on that? That brings us to roundtable. Anybody would like to start us off? Everybody wants?
No.
Nothing to sweep.
Thank you, oh, great. Way to start us off, anybody else? Sydney?
Nothing to sweep.
Oh. The pressure's on, Jen.
I, well, I have kind of a, I'm gonna talk about the crib concerts again, because we can't wait, since there is...
There's still a litigation pending.
Well, that's what I wanted to ask, because, so, he's closed his concert venue, according to his website, and his house is for sale, so that's why I wanted to ask, what happens with the pending litigation, given that he seems like he's kind of giving up, so...
It's still there regardless of whether the...
Defendant or...
The, the actual use of the property that caused the BZA decision exists or not. We still have, we still filed regarding that particular BZA decision, and we need to follow through with that. There's currently a hearing set for the end of May. He has not filed an answer to our, our petition, filed an answer to the other petition. Both of those are still out there. They were not consolidated. Whether or not the court will consolidate them or not, I think will not at this point, but there's, there still is litigation pending, the fact that he has not filed an answer. As of this point, does not mean that he may not decide to do that and request leave of court to do that, even though it'd be late.
So, wait, you said he did file a response to the other one, to the Downer Mitchell one? But not to the town one? And so, I guess what I'm worried, or asking about, is that the town is still spending time, money, and resources on this case and litigation, even though it's really, seems like for not. And I just wanted to say, I think this just feels like a huge waste of time, which we already talked about, but, so it sounds like that's still what we have to follow through with.
From a lawyer's point of view?
Yes.
I have to pursue the petition that I filed in the court. Even though you could direct me to do something different, there would, we would still need to resolve that matter by some sort of action on the council.
I didn't agree with this decision in the first place. I don't want to do anything that makes us spend any more resources on this. Well, that's what I mean, like, can we have, do we have to have a closed meeting? Can we talk about it here to say, like, it just seems like a colossal waste of time, which it already did, and now it seems like...
In terms of what is still outstanding out there, in terms of litigation and the fact that I told you there could still be, the fact that the person hasn't filed yet, you know, it's not, is not conclusive. That I think we want to, I would recommend that you discuss, discuss pending litigation and what to do with that in a closed session, if there is, you know, the will to do that.
And should, if to do that, should we wait until after May 25th? Is that the date you mentioned?
You can.
To see if we get a response?
I, I would urge that at this point.
Okay, got it.
Until the court has had a chance to review it.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Do you need a council majority to say we want to do that, or?
No, no.
Okay. Just trying to cover all our bases. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Who's next?
We'll publish.
Thank you. It's like, very, I don't know. Who's next? Sheila.
Rotary had our senior, senior from event. Thank you very much for HPD showing up to help us, and we returned the favor by sending the evening, weekend shift, the leftover lasagna salad, et cetera. So we, we really appreciated their help, and thank you very much. Also, can we get an update on the retreat information? I understand you have an individual for...
Right. Well, based on the conversations with some of you, showed interest in the retreat, it wasn't, it seemed to me that it wasn't standard, you know, we're doing goal-setting, we're doing some visioning, or the things that the Virginia Institute government has, they staple people ready to come up and assist us. So it seemed to be more focused on communications, you know, working, so as a group, group dynamics, related questions. I turn my attention to ICMA, who did have a, a person who has just recently published a novel article about council interactions in the Public Manager Magazine. I reached out to him, his name's Michael Conda, he's located in Texas. He, he and I spent probably, of course, several conversations, three hours on the phone, or of course, three hours, three conversations. He was interested in, in performing a retreat on our behalf. He does coach councils around the nation. He will be, it's not just a retreat, fire and forget it sort of thing, it would be a resource available to sort of, in the course of the next year, to work with him. It would be costly work for him to bring him back, but he would certainly work on it. How this would unfold is, there would obviously be some sort of leadership survey instrument that would be distributed to each of you, and the letter introduction for me introducing Mike to you all. He would then take that survey instrument, he would come into town, or of course, one-on-one meetings with you all, like an hour each, or of course, a day or so, or a day or two, he would be with you all to ensure a take on what is, what you hope to get out of retreat, what you're hoping to achieve by this. He would then go back to Texas, he would then work up a, a program that is specific to Hurdum. He would work with me, and if he had any questions, he would obviously call you all. And then he would come in and he proceeds based on my conversations with him and his research in town. It would be approximately either a, two evenings, four hours apiece, or one weekend day of eight hours, where he would fly to town and he would perform the retreat. He would then follow up, we'd have a follow-up after the fact with him as well, and then he would be available to you all for comments, questions, for this, for the next year. It was, he's a delightful guy, he truly is engaged, he truly has a passion for this, he is a certified, he's a certified manager, he's been a manager for 35 years, now he's in consulting business, and he focuses on communications and council dynamics, that's something. As a matter of fact, he said, if you want to talk about strategy, I'm not your guy. I have somebody I can get you, but that's not my focus.
What's the budget he's proposing for this?
Seventeen thousand dollars.
How much was the retreat, last year?
The last year's retreat, I think, was somewhere around six total.
Six thousand dollars?
That, again, that was a different, different animal, that was somebody out of the Virginia Institute, that was somebody that was, and quite frankly, I don't think that was a well-conceived, that was actually two years ago, that was a well-conceived retreat.
I haven't thought the last two retreats were worth the money we spent on them. In fact, two retreats ago, I urged the town manager not to pay the second half of the fee because we came out of it more divided than we entered, which is exactly the opposite of what a retreat is.
Having similar experiences with that retreat moderator at a staff retreat, I have a very similar opinion of her capabilities. She, they, when I did talk to the institute, they said, if you're going to go somebody, they kept throwing her name out, and I went, okay, let's guess again, and they were unable to, they found a person we use for staff retreats, I think they're great for staff, but I don't think they'd be very good for you. Somebody I, I get along with great as well, as a matter of fact, she asked me to write a quote for her book, that she's trying to get published. She's phenomenal, but I don't think she is suited for this group, she's more of a staff person. But this one specializes in council finances and council communication.
Do we have that kind of money available?
It's your budget. You tell me. You know, obviously, I have the ability to transfer money from other things and move things around, but if this is something that you need, that's for, that is fine.
No, I definitely think it's needed for the group, but we're five months into my plan, and this has been going on for months, so I wish we had come up with something sooner, because now, five months down the road, we're saying, oh dear, I did give you some names, I don't know what happened with those, I don't know if you contacted them or not.
We did, and we, I called one or two.
I didn't make them.
They were, they were targeting public sector board of directors focused, and they weren't, it wasn't a political environment type of operation. So I was looking, and actually, they would be, my guess would be, based on their lateral material, based on the research, they'd probably end up being the same member that this was caused. Would be my guess. I did, I didn't have a report.
I think this is a lot of money to spend, given that we just raised taxes to turn around and spend seventeen thousand dollars on a council retreat. And Sheila hadn't even thought about that. By the time he gets here, it would be six to seven months into the retreat.
Well, I've been bringing this up for five months.
Our manager was trying to find the right kind of person, because we did keep hearing the same three or four names, which didn't seem like that would, that would work.
No, I gave a whole list of other names from a professional consultant that I knew. I didn't know any of the people they had on the list, but...
They, they were more corporate-focused, more focused.
Well, then, we need to get something, because it's just going to continue.
What's going to continue?
The bickering, the less than cordial effect we have for one another often, and I just don't think that's appropriate. I don't like seeing our staff have to sit through some of that, so...
Well, I agree our term got off to a bumpy start, but I think it's pretty, part of the course, most of the time when a new council is seated, it takes a couple of months to kind of get your bearings. We just passed a budget, and we're organized, and some of the best discussion we've ever had, in my opinion. I think that our, the voters elected us to work together professionally, and really the only difference, I think, with this body and previous bodies, is that some of us used to be closer personally, and I think that it's on us to fix that. And I don't think we need a consultant or to spend seventeen thousand dollars of taxpayer money to do that.
I haven't heard anyone besides Sheila who seems to advocate for this. If other folks want to speak up?
I'm supportive of this. And I think the money is surprising to me, but I'm definitely supportive of doing this.
I mean, we had people last term thinking we needed some, some type of intervention at the council level, because it was very obvious to the public. So I just don't want us spending another two years like that.
We did it last term, though. We did hire a consultant last term.
No, we didn't, not for...
We had a retreat last term, the beginning of last term.
Are you talking about something else, Sheila?
I'm talking about once things got to this horrible situation where the public was mentioning, mentioning that frequently about council not getting along.
Where it was.
So, yeah.
I had surprising people that I didn't expect say that they don't watch or listen to our sessions anymore, because they're uncomfortable, people that I don't know very well.
Yeah. I think that was true the first few sessions, but I haven't felt that in the last two or three months, actually. I think that if we all decide we're going to get along professionally, we can do it.
So everybody wants to just pack this?
I think it's the money that's slowing me off, honestly. It's not really anything else. Do you think you could get him down?
I, I think that we should keep his name, and when the next term rolls around, have him ready to roll in, you know, January or February. Because it sounds like a great find, he's very different from anybody we've heard of.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not, we, after our talks, we're planning to meet when we're both in Nashville for the ICMA conference later in the year. I mean, we really enjoy our interchanges, he gives me a lot of advice that I've taken personally, and I thought, you know, it's solid, it sounds, sounds stuff. I look at this as a relationship, but I'm going to continue regardless of whether or not this goes forward. I think he's, based on his email to me, I mean, a lot of it is, you know, posturing, sales posturing, but he did talk to me about my role in ICMA, and he did cut some corners for us on that front, he gave us a little bit extra in terms of not just a retreat, but a non-coaching thing like that. Added, he just added without much hard-to-asked corners. Again, his email, he said, based on your role in ICMA, things like that. He's excited to help us out.
Yes.
I, I support this. I think it's a good thing, and kudos to the Vice Mayor for stepping out and trying to show some leadership on this. I, I think it's definitely something that we should address. I think, though, unless everyone is convinced that there needs to be a different adjustment on how we engage, then it's a waste of time and money. So unless everyone's committed to it, you know, it's not going to make a big difference. But I do support this, I think it's a good idea.
I think we can do it without seventeen thousand dollar consultant.
I think, I'm in the middle of this one. The reason is, we should be able to resolve the problem ourselves, but having said that, an external person giving different perspective and, you know, fresh pair of eyes is also necessary. Even successful, successful people have their own coach, or, you know, people who can help them conflict resolution and all those things. People hire external. So we should be able to resolve our issues, communication, relationship, all those things. We have to take the initiative also, because if we don't take, hiring any external person is not going to affect anything. So it's, it's both, but at the same time, seventeen thousand dollars of taxpayers' money is too much.
What I can also do is, is Article, Public Management, so it's a really good article about, about really focusing on what is good for the community and using that as a springboard to getting beyond this. And I'll be glad to share that with you all, on the Congress, and get that out to you all. He also has two books out there, he's, he's, he sent me, one, apparently, I got an email today, it's from the Postal Service, it's inbound to me, and I can see that he wrote on it, which is, you know, just, I thought I'd just give this to you, just, you know. Now, I'll be glad to share that as well. There, again, this man, I have, I got a good read on him in my conversations and reading the article, and like I said, I intend to keep him in the network for moving forward because he's, and I definitely am going to be helping him in Nashville. He truly has, gave me a lot of good advice in our personal conversations. If you want to press pause on that, read the article, look at the, you know, potentially the release of the book when it gets here in the next couple of days, that's certainly an option.
The seventeen thousand's out of the question, though. But I think something would...
One of the things he was really excited about this group, that, based on my conversations with him, is truly you all have very similar views of where this community is at, and that's been apparent since the day you all received it. And as a matter of fact, of one of the things I had told him in my conversations, if I gave them a survey on local, state, national issues, anonymous, and they handed them back, I doubt I could delineate the group, but that's, that truly, that's the policy space we're operating in, isn't that why? It's, it's, it's very, there's a lot of commonality there, and it just, he looked at that as the place where you all can focus on, as a way to springboard yourself and get back to, you know, best friends, best buddies, that's another question, to truly get back in professional relation, working on yourselves, from that springboard of what's best for this community. And, and that's, that's kind of my conversation with him, where he was excited to work with this group, because normally, guess what? You are not alone in this. He said, he has seen truly dysfunctional groups governing, and politically they're apart, personally they're apart, and he, and he's trying to work with them, things like that, and you do. And again, he, there's like six, he's on a permanent call rotation, the council's on a permanent call rotation, and it is kind of like, ooh, to be honest.
You know, something behind it.
Exactly. But again, there are some really good things happening in this group that he sees and he has got by, and again, I think that's, that's where we have to coalesce around this, is these great things that are happening in this community, because as he pointed, you know, I'm telling him everything, it's don't matter, he's going, I mean, you're really in that transformational stage, aren't you? Like, we get out to the transformational stage, absolutely. And he started talking about this, and he started talking about where you all were. He went out and researched your bios, he was impressed by the group.
Oh, jeez.
No, he said, you know, not often does he see an accomplished group of people in their various fields of study getting together, and he's seen a lot of good that is potentially sitting right here in this thing. And so, I don't think I'm betraying a conference by telling you all that, but that, that's substance of a lot of our conversation.
You already brought some logic into it.
But it's true, it's, it's, it's true. And these were very, you know, we talked one Sunday morning, and by the time I hung up, I was, I was feeling, you know, it's like, wow, let me go do something, let me go to the gym. An exercise. So now, he, again, there's, there's a lot to be said about the word progress, but...
So why don't you send us that article and links to the, the two books you've suggested? And we can...
I can certainly send you all his, his information as well.
So I'm a net-net kind of guy. If we're not, I'm a net-net kind of guy. So if we're not in it for the seventeen K, it's a waste of time, quite frankly.
What, knowing information?
Yeah. I mean, if no one at this point has sold, perceived the value at seventeen thousand plus expenses?
No, no, it's included.
It's included?
It's included.
Let's just call it twenty K.
And that's where, no, that's where he sent his, his airfare, his hotel, his...
All I'm saying is, twenty K, we're either in it, I mean, I just, I just don't see the need to spend his time... to spend his time or anyone else's time, we're not going to do this. If you're not in it now and reading the books, not going to change it, it's not worth it, is my point.
He just offered to send an article, that seems like a reasonable thing.
That's a two-page article, and actually, the article is written, it's written, it's written for me, it's written for me to facilitate it with you. And when I called him up, I was like.
So, my prediction is no one will change your mind, we're not going to do this, that's my sense.
But I don't think the article was intended to change our mind, I thought it was just to write a article.
We can do with it whatever you want, I mean, it.
So, that point of how we're, this discussion was decide whether or not this is something we're going to do, correct?
That was why I brought it up, because I've been bringing it up for how many months now?
Since day one.
It's a dead horse that I beat.
That's what I'm trying to get her, I think she wanted that answer, and I think that's what I'm trying to help.
So, he's not the only option out there. I mean, he sounds wonderful, but he's not the only option.
That, that's the one that ICMA turned me on to after, after the institute couldn't, wasn't satisfying me, after looking at the private sector where those issues are vastly different and the cost would probably be about that. I looked at ICMA and got down this path.
Can we keep this option open and we'll put out a little to this?
We can, but I think the further down the road, the less we're going to get to our money because we're going to have, I mean, if, we don't get to this until, what are we thinking, probably August before we could get here, or is it sooner?
No, yeah, I think we can get here sooner. I think we can get here.
We're just according schedules.
Yeah, we have according schedules. I don't, I don't think his schedule's going to be the same.
Well, that's the problem, we put it off so late, now it's almost summer and then everybody's going to say, I can't be there because I'm gone for the whole summer, so then you.
I still stand by, most of us have known each other for years and we could solve this without a consultant, we just talk to each other.
That's, yeah.
Why don't we go out for drinks and talk? We did it two weeks ago and it was lovely. I thought we were turning a page after the budget meeting. No town business was discussed. I can vouch for that, but I mean, there's some camaraderie there.
And you paid for drinks, so thank you.
Well, if you want to, okay.
I can buy a lot of drinks for seventeen thousand dollars.
We, we're not paying for that. Town is not.
No, I'm not trying to be flipy, guys, I just really think that what Phil just said, that he, that the consultants said after looking at us, and this is a really unique group, I've had a lot of councils across Virginia, we don't look like other councils, our background isn't like other councils. I just think we can do this. I'm not nearly as worried about things as I was several months ago and I was hoping I wasn't the only one.
Well, you're not the only one, but that doesn't, I, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't like to do this, all things being equal, if seventeen thousand were not the amount of money, because I think it could benefit us regardless of what our relationships are. However, if we decide that we're going to get together for drinks after every council meeting and have some camaraderie, I think we could probably move in the right direction, that would be a nice start.
Undisclosed location. I don't know if it has to be that rigid, I just really think that we're not giving ourselves enough credit as colleagues and neighbors and human beings, I think we can do this. I'd like to try.
Well, let's try then.
And speaking of, since, since we have kind of gone down the road and the timings become an issue, I'd just like to throw out, maybe this will be, was that your, were you done with your roundtable?
I guess so.
Well, let me say this, and if you have more, you can come back. I think that for the next term, we always say this, then we get wrapped up in the term and we don't do this, but I, I would like to propose that, you know, when the next election season rolls around, that the sitting council or someone sets a date of, here's when the swearing-in's going to be, we're going to have a retreat, it's going to be one of these two weekends, so that if you're running for council and you've filed your papers in June, you know, hey, I better have these dates open because then we wouldn't run into this problem or retreat.
And we have talked about that for the last six years. And then it never.
Never happens, so, just a thought.
Put it in your schedule.
Sheila, did you have any emails? I didn't want to cut you off.
No.
Okay. I don't have anything either, so, Mr. Town Manager.
Yes, I do. So, you all have gotten the dates on the next roundtable?
Yes.
Yes, it's at the NRC. NRC is, the folks out there are gracious enough to provide us with translate support, they're gracious enough to provide us the space, they're helping us with advertising and marketing as well, so they're stepping up on that front as well. We are, help things are being done differently. We are paying for, paying for the NRC to provide childcare.
Right.
We're not providing child, I want to reiterate, we're not providing childcare. The NRC will provide childcare, we'll pay for that.
Seven PM?
No, during the day, I saw that.
No, no, no.
No, that's right, that's.
That's right.
And the other thing we're making a change with is note-taking, I thought the note-taking was uneven last time, and what, now we're adding in the mix of potential translations going on and various things like that, potentially, and it would be, it was driving the cost of that up considerably is what I was looking into at the birth. And then there was talk about can we put recording devices on each table and then have a, have somebody translate it back or note-take it back, and that was, then we started having, the NRC thought that was a terrible idea. And again, it's, so we're, we're just going to pull back from the note-taking as a whole, this is truly to get you all with your constituents. And so, moving forward, I think the note-taking is something we're probably going to drop off because of the unheavenness of this. Let's see this, whatever issues we have, I'm thinking about.
I think we'll, we'll probably have more, but I think you've covered them. We're going to meet with the NRC after this.
Yes.
Hire them up.
So, yeah, the high-level stuff's been cited, now that goes into details. But again, any questions that you all have about this roundtable before, and we'll do this one, we'll take a pause over the summer and as we're doing that, we'll start planning for the fall and how that will work. And then we'll circle back, we'll, that and we'll probably have a discussion, I don't know, about how you want to take this part moving forward.
I would also like to suggest that the council members there take the notes because we're the people who bring it back, so I was the best note-taker in my college. My manager.
I, I was, I was there for half the first one and I'm reading the notes and I was confused, so it was, that's why.
I think it's a hard task, it's a conversation.
And these aren't folks that do that for a living. We were grabbing staff that had some note-taking ability and it just, it just, that, that's one where I'll say, that idea was.
Although I had three different note-takers, because I was at three different tables, it did not follow the conversation that went on at my table at all. Because I'm going, so once I've said, so, I know how hard that is.
Yes.
And if you're going to ask that the person, the council member, sit there and take the notes, it's kind of hard to participate in a meeting because I've been on committees for Fairfax County and then they said.
Can I ask a question?
We want you to take the notes.
Why do we need to take notes? Do we need to take notes? Are we doing anything?
No, I think something meaningful, something actionable, something that really that you want to come back to me and say, hey, manager, why did you let this happen? Or, absolutely.
I followed up with everybody that had specific questions and I got their emails and I made sure that I responded and got them. If I told them about something, then I said, if they said, well, they just, they just threw the downtown redevelopment at me, that was just a knee-jerk overnight, and I'm like, no, I am going to send you the timeline, thank you, Lisa. Screwed. And I, and I sent them these things so that they could see what had happened and they were like, oh, wow, I didn't realize that. So, I did take care of that.
But maybe we're spending a lot of time and energy on something that, I thought we had to have some sort of that.
No, no, it was, it was a way, I, I just wanted to capture a couple of things, and I'll tell you right now, if there is a request for information, that is a lawyer request, you're a public official, they hand it to you, you have to get that back to us. So, you have to get, so, if that comes up, grab me and drag me over and say, hey, we have a, we have a request for records.
We want to have a record, I'm sorry.
And so, it was for that, or anything that was like really actionable that I, that, so, I can take it the next day and start working on. And that was.
Well, it wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't be hard to have a, just a list at each table of just the major topics that came up, and then if there was something, a major request or concern or something, the council member's going to remember what that was and bring it to the manager.
Like with our attorney, I had someone bring up Airbnb, so I got the email and asked all that to her and emailed the person and said, this is who can help you with that, so.
But speaking of Airbnb, the planning commission has continued that until, I think, September, so waiting to see what the county's doing.
I think it, it will look better and it is better that we are council members, we are public servants. So, what we can do is, we can talk to people, if they have concerns, you can just write down the bullet points, you don't have to be like verbatim, right? And then if there is any questions, you can ask their email, put their email and then go home and, you know, do your research and reply if you need it, right? We don't need somebody to take the notes.
Take my word for it.
Yeah, it was March 2nd, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yes, it was.
I took that.
All right, Cesar will be the official note-taker.
To his point, just bullet points.
And in all fairness, this is all after Portsmouth, Portsmouth does not take notes and what we suggest that we were to take notes, it was kind of funny, like, why would you do that?
Now, maybe we know why.
Well, well, don't touch the stove, that hurt, so, yeah.
Yeah, I did the same thing, I had all my.
Some of these things we've talked about, so.
And, and just like last time, I'll be there in the room. And we'll be there in the room. No, I won't be security that day, I'll just be.
It really is a lot of fun, it really was.
It was very well received, yeah.
You love it.
And then depending on what happens, then we'll talk about what the next one will look like. And on that note, we could talk about the downtown, the downtown, HPRP is hearing the three certificates for Comstock next Wednesday.
Seven PM.
So, seven PM in the council chambers. If there are people that you know that are very passionate about this project, I would suggest they come out and speak at the public hearing, that would be a welcomed thing. As many people we can get on record as possible, like to show the communities will on this matter, will certainly help us in the long term. So, I would encourage you all to talk to.
What's the date in town?
May fifteenth, seven PM, next Wednesday.
So, Mr. Town Manager, if our town clerk was here, at this point, she would be saying, if any of you are planning on appearing at that hearing, she needs to know because more than two of you were there, she has to do a notice. So, if you know right now that that's going to occur.
We'll be on HPT.
I have a plan to attend, I would like to do that.
I'll watch it on TV, yeah.
I came to the work session, but I, I kind of came late and then left.
Well, it's only if there's, if there ends up being, if everybody thinks, oh, such and such.
If you're the third one to get there, you have to leave. You do, or duke it out with one of the first two. Listen, I was an elementary school teacher, I know how these things work.
That was funny.
I always have a question about that, if you're just sitting in the audience, it's, how is that a public meeting?
It's because it's town business that we are there.
It's towns is business being conducted and it's protection for this body, that that's been advertised, that you're going to be there.
I don't have a problem with that, it's just.
We do not allow alcohol in town buildings, but sitting in the comfort of your living room, who's decided?
I've seen some hats where you can put a little beer can.
Do it here. One more thing is, I'll be out from about eleven o'clock Thursday through Friday for medical related things and I'll be back on Monday.
It's none of our business, we wish you well.
Nothing to be concerned about, I'm not getting any insurance out of this one.
Oh, good. All right, does anybody who passed come up with something they needed to share? All right, awesome. Well, that concludes our agenda this evening, Madam Vice Mayor. Time to move with time.